We're going to start the meeting because we have a public hearing at 9:30.
Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, February 7th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. Council President Flores, Members Brzezinski, Nelson Shaw, Titus Troop, and Witherspoon.
Stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes of the January 17th, 2024 City Council Meeting and bills for payment on February 9th and 16th. Council Members Brzezinski, Nelson Shaw, Titus Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores.
Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? All right, we're going to move on. I ask the media to please line up on the left aisle facing the stage and citizens to line up on the right aisle to avoid confusion. I would like to ask the public to clearly state your name and municipality for the record. You will have five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Fredda Tepfer and I live in Erie. Contract item number three on the agenda calls for a renewal of the building inspection under writers rental inspection. And I wondered, I was there the day that the employees used to do those inspections, questioned the wisdom of having that. I wondered how well the city has been monitoring the effectiveness of using an outside inspector versus having it done some other way? Or if there are any tweaks that need to be done for this contract to make it so that it actually does reveal whether the owners of the property are taking care of the properties properly. I noticed that Mr. Zisk, who is a recently retired Public Works Director, is on there to get up to $10,000. I wondered what his role is going to be in a technical services contract. Before he left, he did not do anything to ensure that there are sidewalks around Baldwin Park as he had said. He didn't say there would be out of phase, but they aren't there. There aren't even lines on the street to show where the crosswalks access to the park are to keep people from parking there. I just, I wondered why, why are we hiring this person who is getting probably lots of money in retirement? What function is he performing? I'd like to see all the money that we're giving to small businesses. I'd like to see that the city is, is making good on the promises of the ARP. At least someplace in this county is doing a good job of that. I do hope that when we give money to, through LERTA, through recommending RCAPs, to enterprise loans, to whatever, that we're ensuring that these businesses are, are maintaining their sidewalks, are, are in compliance with the kinds of laws we have. And speaking of sidewalks, I just parked across the street using the number. I have an, I have the app, so I have a credit card. I can do that. How are we ensuring that people who don't have a smartphone with the app, who, who are not banked with credit cards, have access to park downtown? It just does not seem to be just. I would love to see more bikeways in this city. I also believe that the Green Garden Bike Way must go all the way to 8th Street. And there needs to be a three-way stop there. And it's ridiculous for you folks to only go that far. It's ridiculous. I also think that if you're spending that much money on improving bike access, that there needs to be a sidewalk, a continuous sidewalk on the east side of Green Garden between 12th and the Bayfront Parkway. Where Enterprise went in, there should have been additional parking required there. Also, the, there isn't, there's only one or maybe two of the Engrade Railroad crossings in this town that have reasonable pedestrian access across the railroad tracks. And for somebody who uses a mobility device, it's nearly impossible. I urge the city to take a position to call for a ceasefire in Gaza, to, to call for our federal government to stop unconditional funding to, to Israel, only to fund their Iron Dome without, without them providing reasonable humanitarian aid in the Gaza Strip. I urge you to, to, to support the governor's proposal for sales tax to go towards transit funding and to urge our local representatives to support the regional greenhouse grass and gas initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Fredda.
Good morning. My name is Mary Nelson. And although I live in Mill Creek, I volunteer at EMEA's ministry. So I hear the difficulties that people encounter with their housing situations. So I am here today speaking on behalf of the newly formed Erie Spiritual Coalition, or ESC. The Erie Spiritual Coalition utilizes successful models from across the country and throughout history. From current California-based nonprofit human service coalitions to interfaith councils that were formed during the civil rights era. Grounded in spiritual principles, ESC strives to bridge the gap between people, organizations, and government by advocating for policies that foster human flourishing and to build thriving communities like Erie. ESC is the area's newest group and we aim to tackle the causes and symptoms of systemic housing injustice in our neighborhoods. So we want to commend the council on Agenda Item Number Two under New Business regarding reform to our city's archaic zoning laws. We ask for your support of that resolution today. These suggested reforms will help address our dire shortage of affordable housing and lack of new construction. We urge the zoning office, solicitors, office, and planning department to work swiftly and collaboratively to produce a plan. We at ESC are willing and eager to engage in study sessions with you. Last month, ESC held our first public event with a forum at Mercyhurst University on housing solutions for the city. We thank the three members of council who attended. And we would love to welcome all other members and the mayor's administration to our next community conversations. We are repeating that first event on February 22nd at 6:00 p.m. at the MLK Center and on February 27th at 5:30 p.m. at the Multicultural Resource Center. These events are free and open to all. Again, thank you for taking a key next step to address systemic housing injustice in our community. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Weiser, 2704 Green Garden Boulevard. And I just wanted to put a few points out there today about the things that are going to be voted on today. One being the ordinance that is going to restrict the Green Garden residents' parking between 26th and 38th Street. I have a question. There's, there's, I know there's been some compromise and people have worked hard on this to get us some exceptions to that restriction. We don't want any restrictions at all. And we would ask if, if the bikes can go around cars on those days that are exceptions, why can't they go around cars on any day that we feel we need to park there for a limited amount of time? We're being asked to fill out a form a week in advance to plan how many people we're going to have, to plan what kind of event we're going to have. I mean, a lot of times it's a spontaneous event or it's, you know, it's something that you're not planning for. It might even be an hour or even a half an hour or 15 minutes that you have to park in front of your house for some reason. No one on Green Garden is abusing parking. No one on Green Garden encourages anyone to really park on the street. We, we use our driveways as much as we can, but there are times when you need to. So then, so I would ask that we table that ordinance today until we complete this plan. The bike lane that's, that's up for vote today, the funding on it goes to 38th Street and goes down to 12th Street or to the Bayfront. There's nothing connecting it. So that's going to hinge on further funding. We don't know how long that's going to be. The next step, as I know, is French Street. That's nowhere near us. There's nothing connecting. So it could be three, four, or five years that we're sitting there with restricted parking before anything else is completed. So if we could table that until the rest of this is completed and then look at it again then. And then, we're the first neighborhood that this is happening to and I'm sure we're not going to be the last. When other neighborhoods find out what the rest of this plan is and how they're going to be affected, I think you're going to have more pushback from people as well. It doesn't just affect the residents who live there. It also affects everyone who drives on those roadways. And if you think about French Street and the amount of traffic that moves up French Street, it's going to affect a lot of people. And then number four, we do not, we do not, what do I have here? Sorry. If it's not tabled, I'm asking you to please vote no. We do not want this. We've been saying this for over a year. We don't want this. And we'd just like to please ask for your consideration today when you're voting to just vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Roach, 3027 Green Garden. I've been there probably like 35 years. I just want you to think of this comment though. You wonder why good taxpaying people move out of the city of Erie. I was able to park in my, in front of my house. I have a mother-in-law who's sick. People come and visit, take care of her. So you just wonder why people are moving out of the city of Erie. You're taking my parking away. I can't park in front of my street. So consider that when you vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Gary Lackey. I live across the street from Kathy on Green Garden. And I've been a remodeling contractor for years. And I've worked on 2,600, 2,700 block and maybe the end of the 2,800 block. I've worked in all our neighbors' houses to upgrade. And so when the bike path first was announced to us, I thought the bike path was going to bring an upgrade to our parking lane. But it's, and maybe it is, but we have a hard time seeing it. I know doing remodeling, it's difficult to see the finished product when you're in the tear out. And I know the remodeling the city streets for this new endeavor of making transportation available for people who bike, it's, it's a, it's a piece of work. What, what, what we need is millions. And I would like to encourage whomever in the city, speaking of that, I really appreciate the mayor and a few of you council members that came down to our neighborhood to listen to us and hear us moan and groan about losing our parking. Because it does seem to, like, at least in our minds, it affects the potential sale of our home down the road. But maybe not. Maybe we just can't see the forest for the trees. Anyways, I would like to see us, you know, if you'd have maybe painted a vision of like, I just happened to go online the other day because my brother-in-law's been listening to me moan about our bike, bike lane debacle. And he sent me a link about these millions of dollars that are available for, through, well, this site was People for Bikes. And there, I looked at Conway in Arkansas and they just received 24.6 million last year to do this 15-mile greenway. And I thought, wow, now that, if, you know, if we can continue, I guess, if you're going to, you know, have us sacrifice our parking, please don't stop. Carry it on and get more money than thousands. We need millions to get 38th Street. I don't really even love the, the plan for North 26th Green Garden Road. It's sketchy, but it's cause we can't see, even though we've seen drawings of it. It's tough to see, you know, and it is even tough having worked for those who engineered something for us guys that got to put it together on the job. It's difficult. And so hopefully it will come off and we'll love it. Mayor thinks we will, I'm sure of that. And, but I really wanted to appreciate the opportunity to voice our opinions about things. Like Kathy said, if we could table this, it wouldn't feel like such a hit, you know? Even though it's a, maybe it's a small hit, parking, not being able to park in front of our house. But it feels bigger and it feels like it could have, you know, hurt our resale volume. And it could if we don't carry it on throughout the city. So carry on, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Amanda Gates. I live on West 10th Street. I'm with Bike Erie. At first, when we heard about the proposed parking ordinance, some of us at Bike Erie were a little unsure. But now after learning more, I do support it, seeing that it designates bike lanes as a lane of traffic. And most of the exceptions are common sense and they don't really need an ordinance. But the last few items with proper notice, I think, are a reasonable compromise to get this through. So we are excited to finally get this ball rolling and see the funds being appropriated. Hopefully that passes today. And I agree with Fredda that I think the lane should continue to 8th Street with a three-way stop and that the sidewalks should be completed in that area as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sean Presonia, 2703 Green Garden. Here to talk about the bike lane and the proposed traffic or parking ordinance. First of all, I want to let everybody know we on Green Garden are not against the bike lane. I, I'm a biker myself. I would love to be able to ride my bike down to Frontier Park and connect onto the peninsula. But I just don't see it in the plan that we have right now. I always go down, go through the Blessed Sacrament parking lot and go over 21st Street to Pittsburgh Avenue. And that's how I get to press Kyle if I do drive a bike there. Looking over the proposed parking ordinances, there are quite a few of them and I appreciate putting them all in. But it gets to a point where they're almost too unnecessary if you have so many ordinances that are exceptions. I mean, everything that's on there is something we ask for and it's great, you know, grocery drop-offs and deliveries and such. But how are you going to enforce this? I know you can answer questions, but maybe when you have your public talk part, you know, is someone going to knock on our door and say, there's a car outside? Is there, are they doing work for you here or are they delivering groceries? Are they just going to get a ticket, then you have to go out and fight it? I don't see the enforcement policy fitting into this whole scheme. I mean, if someone comes over to help someone clean their house, they're not going to have an official vehicle. They're just going to be a, a standard car. I'm having a contractor over today to do some work. I'm going to have to park in the street for an hour or two while he's there so I can get in and out of my driveway. It's my personal car. I'm not the contractor, but, excuse me. But I, it'll be my car out on the street, not his. So all these little things, how are you going to take these into account? And lastly, reading the ordinance, I noticed that Green Garden is not mentioned anywhere in the ordinance. So I'm assuming this is for all bike paths throughout the city. And if that's the case, there are a lot of areas where this could really mess up things. And it, the last line was that it supersedes any other parking ordinances that are in effect. So I could imagine Fairmont Parkway, 48th Street, all those places that have bike lanes are going to be in for a surprise once the thing is passed. So like our, my neighbor said, if you can table this, this will be great. Or just get an idea of how it's going to be enforced before it is put into, into fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Pitzkony. I'm from Erie. This is my first time speaking, so please bear with me. I love and stand with all oppressed peoples around the world and in our community, but today I'd like to focus on the Palestinian people. They are not terrorists. They are my brothers and sisters. I deeply love Palestinians with all of my heart. This love comes from an understanding that they are an indigenous people with deep, deep roots in love, community, generosity, kindness, art, poetry, ingenuity, faith, and so much more. Roots that dive deep into their land like olive trees and flow into the world like their otherworldly olive oil. The fight for Palestinian rights represents all of us, racial, social, disability, reproductive, and environmental justice. Reverberate from the fright for freedom. And through that struggle, I believe that Palestinians deserve full rights, freedom, sovereignty, reparations, a right to return to the land in full liberation from their oppressors. Over the past 121 days of the genocide, myself and millions of others have followed the events and updates on social media through the eyes of journalists within Palestine, heartbroken as some published their last video updates. 117 journalists have been directly targeted and killed by Israel so far. I have met and talked with Palestinians who have shared their stories and moved me to tears with their kind spirit, emotional generosity, and hope for the future. Some have lost over 75 members of their family, 75. I have met others like me who were moved to show support in any way they could, though suffering from immense guilt about not having done something sooner, about not being able to help Palestinians directly, living under a government, our government who directly supports the massacre of 12,000 children, sends weapons and military personnel to kill even more, and against most of the world, prevents a ceasefire from occurring and shields Israel from any accountability. I have seen nothing but love, camaraderie, and a yearning for human rights at protests here in Erie, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, Chicago, Harrisburg, and Washington DC. At least 60% of Americans support an immediate ceasefire. The Gaza Strip has become a 25-mile-long concentration camp. Its inhabitants are refugees within their own land. Before October, the Gaza Strip was under a blockade by Israel. This means that Israel controlled all air, sea, and water surrounding the strip. 97% of water was unfit for consumption. Israeli officials counted calories to quote, "put Palestinians on a diet." Israel bombed the only airport. There were 18 to 20 hours of electricity blackout per day and massacres of civilians were normalized. On October 8th, the Israeli Defense Minister declared Palestinians to be human animals and declared the shut off of all electricity, food, and water from the strip. Israel has dropped 60,000 tons of bombs on Palestinians in the Gaza Strip. To put this in perspective, the bomb dropped on Hiroshima was the equivalent of 15,000 tons. Experts claim that the bombings have outpaced Allied bombings of Germany during World War II and may be the most intense civilian punishment campaign in history. Israeli Bar Barben has destroyed over 70,000 Gaza homes, entire neighborhoods, infrastructure, hospitals, schools, places of worship, archaeological and heritage sites have been destroyed, contributing to the erasure of Palestinian communities and culture. In 120 days, 27 civilian, 27,000 civilian deaths have been officially recorded. But there were over 8,000 recorded as missing under rubble, most likely dead, and many more lying dead in the streets. Half of Gaza's, half of Gaza's population is children, 12,000 of which have been killed. 1,000 children are now missing one limb. Where are they to go for treatment? 90,000 children have become orphans. 90% of Gazans have been forcibly displaced at this point. According to the WHO, 93% of Gazans are facing crisis levels of hunger. There are 50,000 women pregnant in Gaza. With destruction of hospitals and a siege preventing the influx of most medical supplies, C-sections without anesthesia are being performed and miscarriages have risen by 300%. The city of Erie is designated as one of 10 welcoming cities in the United States. The following excerpt is from an Erie News Now article from January 3rd. "I think the more diversity we have, the better community we are." And that's not true of every country, but I think that's true in the United States. "It's very true here in Erie, Pennsylvania, and what we have done here," and I want to keep doing that moving forward, said Mayor, Mayor Shember. The mayor said Erie is a community made up of immigrants and refugees. His own grandparents came from other countries. He said over 100 different countries are represented in Erie and 10 times a year, they swear in 50 new immigrants. The question I have for each one of you is, if given a chance to pass a resolution for a ceasefire in Palestine, would you do it? Would you like to one day look into a Palestinian refugee's eyes or anyone arriving from the Middle East and tell them that we did what we could to make a statement and pressure our officials to do the right thing? The moral thing, during a genocide of their people. Do you want Erie to exercise its basic humanity and join the 47 other cities that have passed a resolution? It's the bare minimum.
We're going to take a pause for a public comment. We have a public hearing that has to start at 9:30 and it is currently 9:29. We will resume public comment after the public hearing. Thank you.
Those people that are going to testify for the public hearing, could you stand and raise your right hand, please? We'll have the stenographers swear you in. First public hearing is a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by property owners David and Donna Ruh for construction of a one-family dwelling located at 917 West Front Street.
Good morning, members of Erie City Council. My name's Dave Rio and my wife Donna. And just want to start off to say I've been working downtown for over 22 years. And we have searched high and low to where we're going to retire. And we've decided in the city, in Erie, Pennsylvania is going to be our place. So with that said, before you is proposal for a waterfront conditional use. You'll see in a plot plan that you have as well before you. It, originally you'll see by the dotted lines, it was four city parcels that I purchased that were non-conforming. We replotted the property, made two very substantial conforming properties. One facing 917 West Front Street, which was an old welding shop which we raised. And then the one on West, West 2nd Street in the back, a rear lot there. So with that, it's gone through both the Design Review Committee as well as the Planning Commission. And it's before you for final, for the final approval. I'm here to address any other public comments that some people might have there on the agenda regarding this. I think the plan speaks for itself and it is a, again, just a personal residential property. So that whole area now is, is all residential after taking down the last building. So with that.
I don't have any questions. I just thank you for building in the city and coming to retire in the city. Any other council members have any questions or comments? No?
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the public hearing and we will continue where we left off and, oh, we haven't, I apologize. We have another public hearing.
This is a request for local designation of 317 Frontier Drive Erie PA as a historic structure for the provisions of Article 7 of the City of Erie zoning ordinance, historic resource protection.
Hi, my name is Matthew Falcone and I'm one of the owners of 317 Frontier Drive. I'm also responsible for submitting the landmark application for the house. I'm grateful for your time and consideration today to this legislation and of course, hope that you move to make the Waybill Weber House Erie's first landmarked home. I also want to thank Erin Phillips for her help researching the house's past and Andy at Angela's Roofing for putting up with me and keeping a good-looking roof over my head. I also want to take a moment to talk about why my family is pursuing this landmark status for the house. When most people talk about landmarking and historic preservation, they do so in the context of planning and place-making and economic development. For me and my husband and my daughters, it's more than that. It's about acknowledging and respecting those that came before us. Those that, without even knowing, helped make our lives the way they are today. As you can see from the research, we're only the latest in a long line of owners, a veritable cast of characters in Erie's past, who have put all their time and money into creating and keeping up the house for nearly a century. We are happy to be in their ranks and even happier to be in a position to give something back to our community, Frontier Place and to Erie, which has brought so much joy into our lives. The city is filled with homes, like the Waybill Weber House, places that witnessed so many different people and stories that make our community what it was and what it is today. I hope that all of you vote to landmark the house and that this is the first of many to come before you. Thank you all for your time and all that you do to ensure that our past remains part of our future. of our future.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments? No? Go ahead.
Does anyone from zoning want to say anything about how this would work? Just, just curious, not, not to put you on spot, but I know this is an update to a zoning issue. You could just shake your head no, because I know you're not sworn in. You might need to be sworn in too. I mean, I think you do.
It has no effect on their taxation? The house is still going to be taxed and everything?
Yeah. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Alrighty, that concludes the public hearings, and we will continue where we left off for public comment. Hello.
Good morning, Molly Brechtel, 820 Cranberry Street. I come in peace, I come to speak of peace, specifically a need for an urgent ceasefire in Gaza. I would like it to take a moment to pause in silence for all of the innocent lives lost since October 7th in Gaza. The majority of those that have been impacted, the majority of those that have lost their lives are women and children, 70%. So as we watch the time tick on the clock, for every hour, 10 people die. Seven of those are a woman or a child. The belief that an innocent child is a combatant is a falsehood and betrays our values of human dignity and respect for all lives. Some folks might believe that this isn't a local issue. It is. It's a welcoming city. We have a large refugee population, and our community members are being impacted. Some report not being able to sleep at night, concerned that their federal taxpayer dollars are paying for bombs that are being dropped on loved ones in Jordan, in Syria, and in Gaza. As a welcoming city, we have a moral imperative to stand with those that are too scared to speak, to prevent genocide, and not just welcome future refugees. I'd also like to make a point, as we talk about a lot of financial distress in our city and a lot of needs, from one of the highest poverty rates in the nation, to a housing crisis and an increase in our homeless population, or our neighbors in our community, the city of Erie, through our federal tax dollars, sends $1.5 million that is used to wage this genocide. $1.5 million that could be used for housing, could be used to lift 300 of our families out of poverty, as discussed by a UBI pilot last year. We have an opportunity and a moral imperative, and everyone in elected office must speak out, speak with conviction, speak with truth, speak in solidarity with our refugee community here in Erie. Not only that, but our taxpayer dollars could be invested to improve life, to sustain life, instead of being used to drop bombs on children in Gaza. Please join us in calling for a ceasefire.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard for public comment? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? To go to the order, do we have any citizens who would like to be heard? Okay, we'll move on, Lori.
Ordinances for final passage, Council File Number 16414, Official Ordinance 3, 2024, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $500 from Appropriated and Anticipated Revenue from Donations Made by Edwin and Patty Curtsey. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, Secured by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Bill Number 16414, and now known as Official File Ordinance 3, 2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 3, 2024 by Yea, 7, Nay, 0. Council File Number 16415, Official Ordinance 4, 2024. Of the City Council of the City of Erie, the City Determining to Encourage Lease Rental Debt Evidenced by the Guaranteed Revenue Bond and the Maximum Principal Amount of $20 Million to be Authorized and Issued by Erie City Water Authority in Connection with the Construction, Alteration, Improvements to the Public Water Distribution Facilities in and About the City, Including but Not Limited to the Asbury Tank Pump Station, of Profi Improvement Projects, and Paying Related Cost Fees and Expenses, Specifying the Realistic Useful Life of the Project, Authorizing and Directing Appropriate Officers of the City to Take Certain Actions and Execute Certain Documents, Including a Guarantee Agreement Between the City as Guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, Approving the Form Maximum Guaranteed Amounts and Sources of Payment of the Guarantee Agreement, Creating a Sinking Fund in Connection with Such Guarantee Obligations, and Appointing a Sinking Fund Depository, and Providing for the Repeal of All Inconsistent Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances. Sponsored by Councilmember Troop, Secured by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Number 16415, and now known as Official Ordinance 4, 2024, be passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 4, 2024 by Yea, 7, Nay, 0. Council File Number 16416, Official Ordinance Number 5, 2024. Council of the City of Erie, the City Determining to Encourage Lease Rental Debt Evidenced by the Guaranteed Revenue Bond and the Maximum Principal Amount of $3,908,584 to be Authorized and Issued by Erie City Water Authority in Connection with the Construction, Alteration, and Improvements to the Public Water Distribution Facilities in and About this City, Including but Not Limited to the Lead Service Line Replacement Project Phase 4, and Paying Related Cost Fees and Expenses, Specifying the Realistic Useful Life of the Project, Authorizing and Directing Appropriate Officers of the City to Take Certain Actions and to Execute Certain Documents, Including a Guarantee Agreement Between the City as a Guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, Approving the Form Maximum Guaranteed Amounts and Sources of Payment of the Guarantee Agreement, Creating a Sinking Fund in Connection with Such Guarantee Obligations, and Appointing a Sinking Fund Depository, and Providing for the Repeal of All Inconsistent Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances. Sponsored by Councilmembers Troop, Secured by Councilmember Nelson, Council File Number 16416, and now known as Official File Ordinance 5, 2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council Read and Adopt Official File Ordinance 5, 2024 by Yea, 7, Nay, 0. Council File Number 16417, Official Ordinance 6, 2024. An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $428,056 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide, to Provide for the Expenditure thereof for the Construction Phase of Erie Loop Bike Way Green Garden Project. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, Secured by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Bill Number 16417, and now known as Official File Ordinance 6, 2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson...
Discussion. We have a little discussion on this one. Hey, I want to point out that as this amount, there was a number of things brought up during public comments today. For example, they discussed this being an issue as to why people are leaving Erie. Now, as the bike lanes that continue from Sixth Street from Erie into Mill Creek, you'll notice that we do not have no parking signs on that, and then once you get to Mill Creek, it does. There's, the way Mill Creek has handled this has been just direct parking restrictions to eliminate any parking on bike lanes. So if anyone's looking to sell their house in Erie for this, to move to Mill Creek, I assure you that theirs is just a direct prohibition against parking on the bike path. It's, it's noted. You don't have, once you get to Erie, you no longer have those no parking signs on that bike path. As far as funding mechanisms go, there was some generally opposition to the bike path, asking about it as a matter of funding. There is a ton of funding for this. A big part of it is that the number of deaths that happen from motor vehicles in America are the, it's the only country, developed country, where it's increasing. All the other countries, it's been decreasing. So there's, because of that, they've, there's a tremendous amount of funding out there for these sort of mechanisms, because Pennsylvania has failed to make its qualification to decrease deaths the way other states have. So Pennsylvania has to, in order to receive federal funding, spend a ton of money, a ton of it, on making these kinds of improvements. And then there was comments about property values. I'll admit, I don't have good comparable cities for this, but there's been a number of studies in Pittsburgh and Atlanta and communities such as that, usually larger. I'll admit, I don't have good comparable cities on this, where property values typically go up in these cases. As far as the 480, or $28,000, I'll bashfully admit that in seeing how that's spent, I mean, we know that there's some signs and some paint being done for the bikers. I will argue that most of this money's going towards driving on the street, not to be, let me say that somewhat bashfully, because a lot of what our paving schedule has been, has gone towards qualified census tracts. There has not been a lot of paving in areas that are not qualified census tracts, if you look at our, our schedule every year, because of the way that HUD money gets allocated. This is in some ways an, an opportunity to see Green Garden get paved for drivers. And I'll say that out loud in ways that I think usually don't get said on this. So I think those are things that I, I'd like the public to consider on this, those that have particular concerns, and I'll probably have some things to say about the ordinance for first reading when we get to it.
Any other council members for comments? No? Call the vote.
Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 6, 2024, finally by Yea, 7, Nay, 0. Council File Number 16418, Official Ordinance 7, 2024, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $351,650.39 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof from Sewer Fund Balance, and will be used to purchase a truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner at the wastewater lane.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
I realize this is sort of one that, that probably no one expects discussion on, but this came up during our budget discussions, and I want the public to know that this is an opportunity, in the way this was done, to make sure that our city taxpayers and our city sewage fee payers are getting a maximum benefit for their dollar on this. The way this transfer works out, it's in many ways reimbursable from the tributaries that, that work off of our, our sewage. So this is, this is one of those areas, and we did the same thing with the incinerator two years ago, where much of this will then be reimbursed by the, by the suburbs. So I'm just, I just wanted to take a pause to, to highlight how exciting that is for me, to make sure that, that we are doing things, simple accounting tweaks that came up during budget discussions, to make sure that our constituents are getting the most bang for their buck. So I really want to thank council for taking the time back in December and November to work through that, and I'd like to thank the administration and Basel for making sure that these things work well.
Additional discussion or comments? No? Go ahead and call the vote, Lori.
Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 7, 2024 by Yea, 7, Nay, 0. Ordinances for First Reading, Council File Number 16419, An Ordinance...
Ma'am, move to table.
Second.
Motion to table.
Discussion. Madam President?
Yes, it's self-evident here, we've been talking this thing to death, and it's much ado about nothing. This is a pathway to no place right now, and until a designated real plan to show us how to get over 38th Street, and more importantly, from 26th down to 8th Street with people wanting three-way stop, this is all about bike safety. This isn't about people in Green Garden complaining about parking. They've lived with bikes since the place has been there, since it's been paved. Bicycles and cars have lived together, and I don't think there's been a fatality, pray to God there never will be. I think we're moving too fast on some of these things. An ordinance, and I understand it, the administration wants the money, they're bending over backwards with exceptions, almost to the point that the ordinance is kind of ludicrous. I kiddingly told the Assistant Solicitor that I was going to add more exemptions, you know, white cars can park on Monday, and green cars can park on Tuesday, I won't go any further than that. The point is, we need some more definite plans. I want to see the safety of the bikers from 26th Street down to the Bayfront, not just telling me about white lines and having cement mixer trucks and semis being on that road at the same time as a white line says a bike can go down this road. It's not safe. And I've, in past years, when the boys were younger, we lived on 42nd and Harvard, and we made the trek down to the peninsula quite often in the summertime. It was fun. Biking is a tremendous exercise, but let's not get carried away with the buck when we're trampling on a lot of things. 38th Street may never get done. The big conundrum there is the zoo. They don't know how to get from Glenwood Park Avenue over the beach. If they figure it out, I'll be happy, and how they're going to go over 38th Street, another thing. But right now, if we're talking bikeways, you got to take your, get on a bus, put your bike on in front of the bus, get off at 38th and Green Garden, and then you can actually bust. can actually bus, get off the bus, get on your bike, and go all the way down to Twenty Sixth Street. And then, we've got no place to go. So I can understand the quandary that the folks living in that area, and not only that area, Green Garden's another problem, when you get below Twenty Sixth Street. Bicycle safety first, and then the rest of this stuff will fall in line. That's why I'm asking to table it, because I don't want to just talk about white lines on both sides of Green Garden from Twenty Sixth Street down. I think any biker will agree with me there. There's no sidewalks. There is, how do you get across the tracks, two sets of tracks? One of them, I give you credit, it's not in use for the most part, but the other one is. And there's somehow to get across, it's going to, it's going to be a heck of a lot more complicated than folks have led us to believe. It's nobody's fault. You know, we have consultants that we bring in here. I don't think consultants ever walked Green Garden, even from Twenty Sixth down to the Bayfront. Because if they did, they would see what happens on Twelve Street with the hills before you get to the light. What are we going to do? Chop out fifteen feet of dirt and put a retaining wall there so we have enough room for a biker not to be killed when they try to get across Twelve Street? It's, you know, I carry on more than I want to, but we spent more time on this for two or three cars on Green Garden. All I'm saying is, let's table it, let's get a real good look at it. And I want more than somebody coming up here from Baltimore and telling me, oh, we're going to put white lines down there and semis and the cement trucks won't hit anybody that are on bicycles. It's not for me.
Additional discussion?
Yeah. Well, this will make the vote exciting. I, this will, this will be really interesting, because I really think that this is the, that this moderated the previous vote that we just took. I really wanted to pass these together. Frankly, I wanted to pass this before taking the vote on even receiving the four hundred twenty eight thousand, because I really wasn't comfortable receiving it until we addressed the concerns of the Green Garden residents. I agree that the exceptions are ludicrous. That was, that was for the Green Garden residents. So this will be interesting. I could imagine this being tabled in that the people defending the Green Garden residents don't want to move forward, and that the progressive, like, bike lane aspect of it doesn't want to see parking exceptions made. But I thought this was a good spot in the middle to make both sides happy. Eighty percent happy. You know, I think both sides on this were, were generally okay with it. We saw both sides stand up and say why they were concerned about this, one saying that it offered too many exceptions, and the one, other one offering that it restricted too far. This was a really moderate conclusion, and if we find other areas that more exceptions need to be made, it gives us something to amend and add to later. I think this is a really, a really good compromise spot, and I would have, I would have been a lot less comfortable, I'm a lot less comfortable with my prior vote without this passing.
Yeah, my concern is that I've always been in favor of the bike lane not having parking, and then the fact that we've done many study sessions, many listening sessions, special meetings, and heard feedback, and then made seventeen accommodations, and we're still not at a middle ground. The city owns the street, and these are residents who have parking driveways that are pretty large, and we're already making the accommodation for this. We're not going to get additional funding from grant funding if we do not use what we currently have. It's going to go back. When's the deadline for that?
We already passed this one.
So with this ordinance, what are we going to do with it? With this ordinance, if we table it, what does it do? Next meeting.
No, we wouldn't have to bring it back up. It would, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't define bike lanes as a lane of traffic. We'd leave that up to the judges, which is a, is a questionable way to do it, I think, for the Green Garden residents, and then we wouldn't have parking exceptions.
Mr. Nelson, could I remind you that you stood in front of those folks at the Sega and promised them they'd not lose their pardon?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is how I'm going to deliver them exceptions. And that's, this is the point of that. I, I don't know how to do it otherwise. I would have never voted to accept the four hundred twenty eight thousand had I not thought I could deliver on this.
I want the money to fix Twenty Sixth Street down to the Bayfront. That's an important issue for us. Leave the people who are going alone until you have connectivity all the way around. That's all, same with the table.
The money's designated for a specific area. If you don't use that money for that specific area, then you're not doing what the guidelines of the grant entice.
Use the area, Madam President.
No, what I'm saying is that this ordinance will be able to allow bikers and residents to have a happy medium. Us tabling it is going to be giving the power to the justice system, like Chuck says, and then making it to where there's no parking on the street. That's what we're about to do.
This is about clarification. If we get clarification on what's going to happen, once again, may I say, from Twenty Sixth Street down to the Bayfront, give me some clarification on how they're going to do something there. Don't be passing rules for a path to no place. That's, in essence, what you're trying to ask these folks to accept. I, I have no problem with one hundred and seventeen exemptions for parking restrictions.
Does anyone else on council have discussion to add to this?
That wasn't done.
Who hasn't been heard, but you spoke, and then Chuck spoke, and it was the next person. You didn't ask for additional speaking time.
Madam President, I'm, I'm fundamentally, like, I'm torn right now. I absolutely support the, the ordinance passing. I don't think that there should be parking in biking lanes. I don't think that that should. I don't think it's safe. Where, where I am stuck right now is the enactment of this ordinance and how, how individuals would, would, because of the, the way the exemptions are, I don't know how we enact it with clarity and with, with equal access. That's where I'm stuck. It's not, I want to see this, and I, and to, to be clear, I, I will vote yes on passing in a, for no parking. Where I am stuck is the exemption process and how that gets carried out and how others can, can access it right now. That's where I'm stuck.
Does anyone else on council who hasn't spoke have comments?
Voting on the motion to table?
I think Kathy had something to say.
Thank you, Madam President. I take this very seriously because I use Green Garden a lot and have been for many years. I use it as a north-south, south-north destination. And I feel for the Green Garden people. You have a beautiful community, and I understand your situation. I have been doing some online reading, and I have in front of me bike lanes make driving easier. I'm not going to take the time to read it, but there's, I've been reading a lot, and there's some communities where people have been killed because of not having bike lanes as well. And, you know, accidents happen, and we, we don't want accidents, we don't want people dying. But I think with the restrictions made, there is that leeway. And one of our problems in the city is that we, as drivers, need to go slower and be more aware. And I think that a bike lane will enhance safety for both the cars and the residents. You have beautiful trees and the boulevard, and hopefully, that boulevard will be enhanced even better with this money as well. Nationwide, there's this discussion, and essentially, people should be able to use bikes safely and make it a way of life for them. I know we have terrible weather sometimes in the winter, but it is a good, healthy mode of transportation. So the more we bike, the better our air is. And the more we walk, the better our air is. And that's why I'm voting for this, sorry.
Alrighty, Lori. I believe everybody on council who has wanted a time to speak has spoken. No, and no, anyone? Okay. Now, I believe there's a motion on the floor to table this, so we're going to call for the vote.
Motion to table, Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Shaw?
No.
Titus?
Yes.
Troop?
Yes.
Witherspoon?
Yes.
Flores?
No.
Motion to table passes four to three. Madam President, this takes us to new business.
Do we have a motion and a second to move the balance of the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Any separations?
Number two and three. Number seven, under purchase orders.
Moving the balance of the agenda, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Resolution sponsored by councilmember Nelson, seconded by councilmember Shaw. That Erie City Council is requesting that the zoning office and solicitor's office work with the planning department committee of council to draft zoning updates to, number one, eliminate parking requirements citywide. Number two, legalize accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Number three, reduce or eliminate lot and unit size requirements. Number four, legalize accessory commercial units, ACUs, and expand ministerial approvals. Discussion?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So this is a resolution, so it's non-binding. I've gotten a couple, mostly enthusiastic. I got one person that involved a little bit of discussion, but mostly enthusiastic responses about that today. However, being a resolution, it, it doesn't practically do anything. It just really directs people to explore it as an option. I do want to point out that there's a number of places where, that are seeing success with this in their development. And really, what, what most of this does is deregulate so that the market and the demand can direct development. This, this hopefully should spur greater development. For example, in the areas that we get the most tax revenue from, the C1 zoning, there's currently no parking requirements. This would expand some of that, whereas many of our parking requirements are somewhat arbitrary. There, we all kind of copy each other as to how many parking spots are needed per bowling lane or bar stool. The legalized accessory, accessory dwelling units, ADUs, this is something that has gotten a lot of steam nationwide right now because of two changes that have been happening in society. One of them is what they're calling the silver tsunami, the number of people, as boomers are now at all sixty and above, a need to have dwelling units that bring families together and can maybe allow for mom or grandma to be closer to the family as they age up. And on the other side of it, the thing we're seeing with younger generations of boomerangs, of people that have gone off to college and as they start their careers, move home. And nobody wants them back in their childhood bedroom, so they want them in the backyard. So this is something where, when my family was looking to buy a house, we made sure not to live in an R1 zone. We, and we can't really do it in my current zone to the way I would want, but we bought an old house with servants quarters so that my mother-in-law can live upstairs. Her knees have gotten tough, she's not doing that anymore, so my children have renamed the third floor the dorm because they're all planning on moving back there. And then, they've also told me that I will be forced to move up there once they have children because they're taking the house. For many of you that have had your kids move away over the years, you should find this to be a delightful conversation. So ADUs are a way to address that, hopefully, and also address smaller housing as family sizes have declined. Reducing or eliminating lot size and unit size requirements. This has led to many townhouses in neighborhoods and still then makes ways for individual home ownership in those contexts as the lots end up getting divided rather than more of a condominium setup. A number of places have seen this, and it addresses less expensive of development. When you look at what it costs to build a house, let's just, to throw a number out there, say that it costs about a hundred dollars per square foot. When you look in Erie, if you have a one thousand square foot house, does it sell for a hundred thousand? That's, that's kind of up for debate right now. But if you get into areas that have townhouses without the minimum lot sizes, it reduces the cost of development. We do not develop many houses. As the mayor's report came out recently, we know, you know, the number of houses developed was shared as to the effects of LURDA. On the other hand, we've knocked down more houses than we've built for these most recent years. So we need to find ways to get new housing stock into the Erie as we knock down houses. ACUs, commercial units, this has become very popular, really only in the last couple years, so I'd like to get ahead of the curve on this. As the work from home movement has happened in the context of COVID, we really see a pivot in culture, but also the use of mixed-use residential spaces. We prioritize that now in our commercial zones. As we see with like EDDC and a lot of the development there, there's a move in culture for more mixed-use spaces. This allows that to continue to expand. And the fifth one is ministerial approvals. Some of these things that have a number of different hoops to jump through at different zoning boards, planning, like, as we see the waterfront conditional, the guy tells us how many things he had to go to to get this approved. Sometimes, we can make this a little more efficient for the developers. But also, what we're seeing in some communities is that they have approved housing plans, architectural renderings, to say, hey, here's a place you can build anywhere. You could just take it, you know, we already had an architect do this, here's the papers, go build it. Yeah, sure, you have a lot this size? Here, here's a paper, go build it. And, and many communities have seen successful development through this. So these are, these are suggestions. These are things that I want us to explore through the solicitor's office and the zoning office. And I, and we've had some good discussion up to this point. So just wanted to define that. There's a good article in the paper with a couple links, and I'll have stuff posted as well.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. Resolution passes yea seven nay zero. Number three, the proposed repository sale of one property commonly known as seven thirty-nine East Eighth Street, Erie, PA, identified by Erie County index number fifteen twenty thirty-four two twelve by the Erie County Tax Claim Bureau to Dylan T. Roseberry, seven twenty-eight East Eighth Street, Erie, PA, in the amount of two hundred and fifty, is hereby approved. Councilmember Brzezinski? Nelson?
No.
Shaw?
No.
Titus?
No.
Troop?
No.
Flores?
No.
Scaring you.
That's a scary one. I'm sorry, I was a no to it. I forgot which one they were talking about.
Resolution fails.
Point of clarification on that, if I may, Madam President?
Go ahead.
I misunderstood.
I forgot which one they were talking about.
Resolution fails.
Point of clarification on that, if I may, Madam President?
Go ahead.
I misunderstood, I, my yes was supposed to be a no, because the gentleman is backing, not backing out of it, but he doesn't want
He doesn't want.
the sale anymore.
Yeah.
Confused me at my old age. But I got it straightened up.
It's going to the East Bayfront Green Trail.
Mr. Witherspoon? I didn't know, I didn't call your name.
No, I know, you just let me out. That's okay.
Are you a yes or a no?
Sort of go to the order.
Okay, resolution fails, zero to seven. Number three?
Seven under purchase orders.
Seven under purchase orders. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to Charles Zisk, 2319 Witter Green Drive, Erie, PA, for technical services for the City of Erie Department of Public Works, property and parks, which is not to exceed 10,000 dollars. Discussion?
I just want to welcome Chuck back in the capacity of advising. In the amount of turnover we've had in that department with personnel, it's going to be vital that we have someone there with some experience, not just some experience, but experience in that kind of role to make sure that things go smoothly. I was checking on some various projects in Public Works just this week. And it's clear that we're going to need, as the new director and assistant director are excellent and well-qualified, it's clear that we're going to need some continuity to give them time to adjust to the role. So, I'm excited to not be losing Chuck and to keep him in this role for a little bit, but hopefully still leaving him plenty of time to vote. So, thanks.
Additional discussion, anyone?
I did oh Mr. Nelson's comments, thank you.
And I triplekated, definitely, Chuck's a good man.
Alright, I think everybody is good.
Voting on the resolution, Councilmembers Brzinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trupe, Witherspoon, Flores. Resolution passes ye seven, eight, zero. Madam President, this takes us to committee reports.
Alrighty, we can start with Councilmember Brzinski and work our way down a little round.
This bike path thing is not a vendetta. Ms. Gaiso is very impressed by your comments, not only today, but the other night, when you were here Tuesday. Please take the time to go up there and talk to engineers and give them a point of view of a professional biker, if I may call you that. I'm very, very concerned about that 26th street down there, I really am. And I don't want to be dead horse, but please do that, Billy, or I think Parlementer was the lady that was there with us Sunday morning. Thank you for that. We're still looking for a place for the Pell Athletic League. We thought we had a, kind of a warm response when we were talking about Sacred Heart School. But unfortunately, the condition of the school with asbestos kind of took us out of the ballpark there. So if anybody has a good idea of where we can put a nice facility together for the police athletic league, we're all ears. Other than that, things are going, Port Authority has the things that they're doing. The Civic Center was very happy with Dancing with the Stars, they filled the place. The auto show over the weekend, I think broke records too. So things are looking up for us, and let's do what's good for the city, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathy? Shaw?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I would like to say personally to thank the administration, council, and colleagues, and people who have reached out to me in sympathy. My dad, David Fulton, passed away January 18th. He was a former city police officer for many years and retired in 1988. So thank you to everyone. My city cellphone number is 814-790-8517. And you can also reach me at k-s-c-h-a-a-f@ereepa.us. And we will be having a study session March 7th here in City Council Chambers at 5:30 PM to address the needs specifically, as well if anyone, business, wants to reach out to me for public restroom. I would like to solve that public health crisis here in the city. And I also want to congratulate Penn State Baron, who's celebrating their 75th anniversary this year. I grew up in that area in the 60s, 70s, and even in the 80s, we would go up there sled riding. And that campus has certainly flourished and blossomed in its 75-year history and does very well. I want to congratulate the gentlemen who were here for the public hearing. I walk that 917 West Front Street area, and it's good to see that that building was torn down and now will be a nice home for him, and retire by the water is a wonderful thing. So congratulations, and the 317 frontier, historic buildings have my heart. And it's a wonderful thing to acknowledge all the history that has gone on before you. That's got to be very interesting. I also would like to comment on the need for people to pick up around their neighborhood, around their housing. We haven't had much snow, so the snow didn't hide too much garbage, but their garbage is still out there. And I know that sometimes it's because that people may not have picked all of it up or dumped some. But we do have a problem of garbage, and it would be awesome if everyone took the time to do what they can, do their part to clean up, thank you. Also, we really need to slow down. Drivers need to be aware. I see it happening more and more where people are going through red lights. So I really think we need to do better in going the speed limit and watching those lights. This morning, I offered a neighborhood person a ride downtown, and he shared with me that he's leaving because of taking care of his father and will no longer be a part of Erie, and we were sharing stories. But it's good to share your story, because everybody has one. And like the people who spoke this morning considering war, war is terrible, absolutely terrible. And we can do our part in a small way. So a resolution would be nice to tell people that we are against the atrocities of war, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
I've got a couple things, a couple things on the schedule from a personal note. February 25th, I'll be judging coffee for St. Martin's Center, if anyone's interested in that event. St. Martin's Center puts on a cool event for coffee every year. And then April 2nd, I'll be boxing to knock out homelessness, if you would like to watch a professional fighter punch me in the head. We will, I still have to pass a physical before I do that, which after yesterday's high school wrestling practice at Erie High might actually be questionable. I had a 15-year-old girl that's hopefully going to go to the first-ever girls' state tournament, want to practice a drop move on me and slam me on my shoulder. Now I have to go to the doctor, so it's, I'm not joking, I... Friggin embarrassing. As far as my actual assignments, the zoning and planning boards are working together to address some of the issues that have come up with the legislation we passed last year with the short-term rentals. I think they've come together with some really good language, and I've had some optimistic meetings with members of each of those boards. And our solicitor, yeah, our solicitor and I have talked about it, and the zone, or the planning office. Pretty excited to see some of that moving forward, and I expect that we'll be bringing that legislation forth in the next couple months. The Historic Review Commission met this week, and they are moving forward with their historic plan. Also excited to hear what they're going to be presenting forward with that. We have a number of things coming from the Planning Department that'll involve meeting with the Subcommittee to go over some of the things that have, that really we were looking at addressing at the beginning, or at the end of last year, but as we hit budget season, it became a little more difficult to schedule. And then I also, in the liaison to CRIZ, as there was an article in the newspaper saying that the board's not currently meeting, the governor addressed his budget yesterday and talked about a substantial expansion in economic development in order to compete with Ohio. He did not mention CRIZ in that presentation. He did talk about another, a number of other initiatives that he's looking at. Twenty-five million dollars for Main Street Matters, just ways to invest in downtown communities. So it'll be interesting to see where the investment comes from. I'm starting to become a little more optimistic of the various avenues that hopefully our reps can bring us. There was comments today from the, regarding some housing issues and some studies around town. I'll be going to the one at the MRC. I've already got that on my schedule, and I'm looking forward to that. I've got two minutes left in my present, of my committee report. And our resolutions are generally ineffective, especially if they're going to be designated towards the federal government. But I do want to offer, in my, one of my day jobs, one of my W2s is teaching world religions. So I wanted to offer a minute and 20 seconds now of some context as to some of this. As people were talking about Palestine, I also can see the facial reactions of folks in the crowd. And in 1917, as you get into World War I, we have the Ottoman Empire. At one point, the Ottoman Empire was the third-largest empire in history. And by the time we get to World War I, because of the lack of resources around there, it had come to a full collapse. At World War I, they came out and they basically didn't exist. There wasn't a government in the Middle East, basically, for a season, and it was almost tribal in that. So in the midst of that, there was very few Jewish people in the Middle East. This is where we start getting into some trickiness. And at the time, most of them were existing in Europe, as if you're familiar, once we get to World War II, and particularly in England. In 1917, there was a Balfour Declaration, Balfour Declaration. And this is where the English government, a member of the English government, basically said that they would like to start working to displace the people that are in Palestine and replace them with a Jewish settlement. Because at that time, there was no Jewish nation. This is, this is really, I think, one of the most pivotal spots in history, where we start to see where the conflict really emerged that we're still dealing with today, 107 years later. But the Balfour Declaration was a declaration basically between England and the United States in 1917, as the Ottoman Empire collapsed, to displace the Palestinians and replace them with a Jewish settlement. I could, I'll probably, over the next couple council meetings, continue to offer that information. From a historic standpoint, I think a resolution is impotent. I don't, I don't care to do one, but I'm happy to offer information and try to continue to illuminate the historic context as to why this conflict continues to exist. That's my time.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, I have no report today.
Thank you.
Okay, I will go a little quickly. So COVID hit our house, and then I hurt my knee, not with anything cool like Chuck did. I actually was just bending over, and it hurt. So it has slowed down just my meetings. I have several meetings scheduled between now and the next meeting, so I'll have all my assignments caught up. But first, there are two things I did want to report out on, is the, when it comes to trying to find information, we have the Erie City website, and there's a great deal that's on there. If there's something that's not on there, if people are having difficulty navigating it, not only could you reach out to me, but you could reach out to the department as well. But make sure that you're following the social media page. And just a reminder that the mayor typically hosts the weekly press conferences, and that this Thursday at 10:00 AM, we will have Kyra Taylor from the Erie Black Wall Street. So if anybody's able to, and they should watch in, and so they can clue into with some of that. And again, if anything is needed, please reach out and feel free to connect. I do want to take a moment, though, to say that I absolutely would call for a ceasefire. I think that this is a humanitarian travesty, to put it mildly. How that comes forward with this body and how we represent that with this body with individual perspectives, I'm not certain. But I would, I would stand and pull forward by a resolution if it came that way. I think that we need, as a body, to be clear on where we stand with this. In addition to, this is a very hard pivot from that, to go back to what Chuck, Mr. Nelson, had said about the housing issues that are happening right now, the Erie Spiritual Coalition. They had one at Mercyhurst that I was able to attend, along with Madam President Flores and Councilmember Shaw. Their phenomenal information, I encourage anybody to get to one of the other several sessions they have. There are two that are coming up in this month. February 22nd, they'll be at the MLK Center at 6:00 PM. And on February 27th, they'll be at MRC, and that one starts at 5:30. So if you're able to make, I strongly encourage you to go there, and that's it.
Alright, I'll go with my report, no, Mel, go for it, Mel, I'm sorry.
I think you and the city clerk is ganging up on me today. Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. I guess normally I have no report, and I, so I understand. As we speak, the Erie Renaissance Group is having a groundbreaking at 10th and Parade. A new bank, Erie Bank is going up there, and this group is rejuvenating Parade Street in partnership with several businesses, and they're doing a fantastic job. All of council was invited, including the mayor, but we have more important business, and that's why we're here and not over there. Regarding the position I took on parking in Green Garden, I think there's some more information that need to be shared. We want the citizens, not only Green Garden, but all over. I see so many dangerous situations with biking and the e-bike. I've seen electric wheelchair individuals riding that bike lane, which scares me as well. Also, I would like the either Police Department, Code Enforcement, I'm not sure, but on 26th and Parade, it would be the southeast corner. There's a store there, and they love parking cars on the sidewalk. And my daughter, who's in a wheelchair, could not get by. And they are there just about every day, and that's where they park. So I'm asking the Police Department or Code Enforcement, just take a look at that and try to rectify that for those who are in wheelchairs, because she would have to go out into the street to get to get by. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, I'll go with my report. I went to a few different meetings. I attended the presentation by the Erie Spirit Coalition and was given, um, an alarming number of the growth of our unhoused community since twenty eighteen. So the fact that Councilmember, um, Nelson has a zoning resolution on the agenda to try to move things forward is always welcomed. So we'll see what we can do in the coming year. I went to the Environmental Advisory Council meeting and their board was voted on. So their next meeting is on February twenty-eighth, um, at three PM here in city council chambers. I attended the, uh, what is it? The breakfast at Penn State for their, um, the Erie Regional Chamber, uh, giving their yearly report for twenty twenty-three. It was over two hundred and fifty people in the room. Um, and our governor came and spoke. It was really enlightening to see our gover- governor come to our city and want to invest in our community and our region. So we'll see what he, um, has coming down the line for us. I also wanted to take a moment to say, you know, today is February, uh, seventh, so it is technically, um, Black History Month. So please make sure you're educating yourself on our community members and the things that they go through daily just to survive. I wanted to give honor to that. So the fact that Kyra from Erie Black Wall Street is doing, um, presentation is good to know. Um, I also wanted to say that our Erie Police Department got a letter from the Mental Health Association thanking them for their EPD Crisis Unit. They gave great statistics that it is a definitely needed service and they gave a big thank you to our officers. So that's always appreciated when we get positive feedback. So that is all I had to report at this moment. I know that we have a study session on, uh, February twenty-second to discuss, uh, Mr. Donnie Crenshaw and his current developments that he's been able to do for homeownership and the rehabilitation of our current housing stocks. So that's always something good to know as a city council member. So that's all I have to report. I asked, um, if our treasurer has a report? Does our solicitors?
No report.
No? Does our mayor's administration in Renee?
Yeah, I'll go quickly. Thank you. Um, this week we are conducting, uh, interviews of the CDVG and home applicants. And on March fourth, that will be our public needs hearings, which will happen at ten AM and six PM here in council chambers. At that time, we'll explain the HUD process and next steps going forward. We will likely not have our allocation numbers from the federal government by then, but we will also receive input from community members and those nonprofit organizations who are requesting funding, um, to get input on their priorities. They will have five minutes each to speak. So, um, that's again March fourth, that's a Monday, ten AM and six PM. The same information will be shared, but people have two opportunities to come and share their priorities. That's for CDVG, which are Community Development Block Grants, Home Funding and ESG, which is Emergency Solutions Grant, which is for shelter. Um, we also have several meetings this week continuing with Infinite Erie and our community partners on inclusive entrepreneurship, the permanent supportive housing, um, project, industry clusters and anchor investments. So that planning is all moving forward. Um, we also have meetings this week on, um, the East Bayfront Greenway Trail Project. And, um, regarding the CRIS, just, um, since Councilman Nelson brought it up, my understanding is that both, um, now the, the House and the Senate have introduced, uh, their version of legislation, uh, for changes to be made to the CRIS. Um, we've gotten feedback that once those are reconciled, um, we should be moving forward and hopefully the moratorium will be lifted and we'll be able to, um, submit our application. So we're patiently waiting, which is difficult for us. Um, in terms of the bike ordinance, I just wanted to quickly say, I think, you know, we've had some good meetings and a lot of good give and take, and I think that we'll be able to coexist. I really do. I think these bike lanes have gone in in a lot of other communities across the, across the country and across the world. And really what the purpose of the, of the parking, um, exceptions was to do was to, um, provide an opportunity, um, and an understanding that there are gonna be things that come up. People need landscaping, people need deliveries. Like, we understand that. We were just trying to put those exceptions into an ordinance, um, and, and kind of provide the city with a tool so that if somebody is violating on a regular, consistent basis, then we have a tool for enforcement. Um, but we'll, you know, whatever council decides to do, we, you know, we're happy to answer any questions and move forward together on that. And then finally, I just wanted to, um, draw quick attention to the flagship grant awards. We're always happy to be able to support small businesses and entrepreneurs as they grow in the community. And so, um, these had already been announced, but these are the official resolutions so that as they submit their receipts for the work that they're doing, we can reimburse them. Um, and we, we attended, actually didn't apply for a flagship fund award, but, um, the Ukrainian, the new Ukrainian bakery, Storbs Market, uh, opened on Saturday and invited us to the ribbon cutting. And if you haven't been there yet, it's, uh, it's a really nice market. They're gonna have fresh produce. They have, um, a deli section. They have frozen foods, refrigerated foods, bakery items. Um, and it's, it's just a, it's, it's a nice, uh, it's a nice market right in the downtown, ten sixteen state. So if you have a chance, stop in and say hi. They're really lovely folks. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that that takes us to the end of the hour meeting, so meeting adjourned.
City Council adjourns at ten forty AM.